Good morning. I'm gonna call the January 7, 2020 City Council Meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone here and wish you all a Happy New Year. I want to ask Councilman Taylor if he would, please lead us in our invocation and our pledge.
Please rise. Lord, thank you for this day and just thank you for the blessings that you continue to give us. As we enter this new year, I just pray that you give us wisdom and foresight to be able to make wise decisions concerning this community and this city. I just thank you for the leadership and the heart that this community shows. In previous years, and an example of this is the young man that sits on the dais with us today. And I just thank you for leaders like him that are growing up to really set an example for their peers. Lord, just continue to look over us and guide us in all things that we do. These things we pray in your name.
Pledge and reasons to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Sharon, I think you will show that all council members are present and along with Mayor Curry. And for those of y'all who don't know, we have an extra person up here today. This is Mr. Tayshaun Curry, who is a fourth grader at Alexander Elementary. And by through feats of his own selflessness and willing to give, we want to show our appreciation for his leadership and his compassion and empathy for his community, so he's gonna serve as the boss today. And so glad to have you here, Tayshaun. He's gonna be part of, showed him around City Hall, and then he's gonna be part of our press conference afterward. And I may just let him have it for the rest of the day and go home. Does that sound okay? All right, he's got it. He's already denied five raises, so he's ready to go. And also you know that, so council members, I will ask too, as we go through the meeting, if you're making a motion or making a second, please try to remember to identify yourself. Because as you know, Anita Brooks retired at the end of the year, and Sharon Smith is filling in today, so she's not familiar with all of our voices. And so try to identify yourself. And then we'll have, the PowerPoint for the agenda will be up shortly because of this transition, trying to fill in some gaps and holes, so that'll be up as soon as we get that down here. So bear with us as we're working on that. Item four is approval of the minutes of the December 3, 2019 meeting. If there are no additions or corrections of those minutes, they'll stand approved as read. No proclamations today. Item six is invitation for public comment. If anyone has a comment they want to make in opposition of or in favor for items on first reading, please raise your hand at that time and you'll be recognized. Item seven is first reading. And one is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the 2019 burn jag grant budget for the Jackson Police Department.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
We do have four budget amendment for you to consider this morning. This will be on their first reading. The first one, as Americans alluded to, is the Jackson Police Department and Sheriff's Department have been approved again this year for the burn jag grant. The total grant is $43,000. It's split between the Jackson Police Department and Mass County Sheriff's Department. Fully funded grant, no match. Move to approve.
Councilman Cisco made the motion. We got a second.
Second.
Councilman Pickens with the second. Any further discussion? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public comment. Anyone in speak in favor of or in opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any further discussion? Council, please vote.
I'm gonna have a roll call.
You gotta flip that switch right there. Vote display. Roll call.
All right. Okay, deal. There we go. Welcome to the new year, everybody.
This is gonna make for a long meeting there.
Yeah.
There we go. Let's try this one more again.
Council, please vote.
That looks better.
And the vote is unanimous, finally.
Item two is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the Metro Drug Fund budget from the Jackson, for the Jackson Police Department.
Okay, this, Mr. Mayor alluded, this amendment would increase the capital for the Metro Drug Fund. This was an oversight from a couple of months ago. Chief Weiser and his department made this budget request through the normal process. But when we were approving the amendments to the capital budget a couple of months ago, because this one is funded through revenues generated by the Metro Drug Fund, this was inadvertently overlooked, and this would correct that problem.
Should we amend it in an amount of $66,000?
That's correct, yeah.
Why is this an ordinance and not a budget amendment?
That's a very good question. Because we're increasing the original budget ordinance in the amount, it requires two readings.
So the total amount increased for the capital budget is increasing? So that's what the comptroller told us we needed to do?
Okay.
And that's for all of these first readings?
That's correct.
Move the approval of Harvey Buchanan.
Motion by Council Buchanan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Taylor. Since this is an item on first reading, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item three is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the capital outlay fund budget for the Seven Pillars Monument.
Thank you, Mayor. The Seven Pillars Monument, which is being constructed over in Shirley Mercer Park, was a project that started under the previous administration. And when this council approved the amended capital budget a couple of months ago, through the bond issue and the bond proceeds, we did budget right at $82,000 for this project. A citizen has made a generous contribution of $5,000 to this project, and we determined that there were some invoices related to this project that were incurred back in June, and this contribution will enable us to take care of those invoices.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I ask, Mr. Black, how far along are we on this project?
We've got the architect involved to sign to begin the project after this next meeting. Getting the stones delivered, so it's on the way. So by the spring, it should be.
Have you all selected the folks who will be honored?
Yeah, I have a meeting, I have former committee, citizens group. We've got six of the individuals identified, but we have one more individual to identify who will make that individual selection tomorrow.
Could you?
Community will plead with it.
Can you let us know who those folks are?
I certainly will. There's a powerhouse. Some you didn't know.
Maybe not.
All right, any further questions? This is an item on-
Move for approval of Harvey Buchanan.
A motion by Council Buchanan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Taylor. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item four, consideration of an ordinance to amend the capital outlay budget for the Jackson Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department is in need of a vehicle to be used by our new deputy chief, and this budget amendment is proposed to accomplish that. And what the Fire Department is committing to do is to transfer $29,141 worth of revenue and budgeted salary expense that was budgeted for a part-time position in the Fire Department. They're gonna fulfill these responsibilities in another manner. And take that $29,000 and combine that with $8,590, which was a unbudgeted insurance recovery from a damage to a Fire Department vehicle earlier this year, and combine those two to $37,731 to purchase this vehicle for the deputy chief.
This vehicle will be equipped in a manner that the deputy chief can actually go on site where there might be a working fire and that sort of thing? Do you know? Or is it gonna be an administrative-type vehicle?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
And city council members.
Good morning.
Vehicle will be used by Deputy Fredo and will be fully emergency response.
Okay, so it's not just an administrative vehicle then? It's something that he could respond to a working fire if necessary?
That is correct. It will have my assignments.
Okay.
No water?
No water.
No water?
Okay.
All right, any further questions?
Move the approval.
Move by Councilman Brooks.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Wallace. This is an item on first reading, so is there anyone wish to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to second reading. Item one under second reading is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the official code of the City of Jackson, Title II, Boards, Commissions, et cetera, relative to the Budget Committee.
Move the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Buchanan, second by Councilmember Taylor. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
All right, item two under second reading is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the City zoning ordinance, Article 5, Specific District Regulations, Section 20, O Office District B, uses permitted to allow beauty shops as a use permitted. This item was passed on first reading.
Move the approval.
Motion by Councilmember Brooks, second by Councilmember Buchanan.
Now Cisco.
Cisco, sorry. Y'all kinda sounded like, now that y'all been working together so long, y'all kinda sounded like. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
All right, moving on to new business. Item one is a consideration of a presentation by ATA for FY 2019 City of Jackson audit. And I'll call on, I think Matt Wood from Alexander Thompson Arnold is here for his presentation and to answer any questions.
Mayor Conger, Mayor Curry, city council, thank y'all for the opportunity to come today. I think everybody had a packet in their mailbox, so we'll, I'm gonna refer to that for a little while, and I think they've got the PowerPoint that'll be up for the crowd as well. So my name is Matt Wood. I'm with Alexander Thompson Arnold. My partner Mike Yuett wasn't able to be here this morning, but he also participated in the audit. So first thing we want to point out is why the city needs an audit. State law in the state of Tennessee requires an annual audit for municipalities, and federal law requires an annual compliance audit for government with federally funded expenditures in excess of $750,000, that's grant money for simple terms. The city had $4.68 million of federal grant expenditures in fiscal year 2019, so a single audit under uniform guidance was performed. The objectives we want to point out is the purpose of our audit. Our responsibility as auditors and the results of the audit. Apologize here, I screwed around. So we'll point out all these things today, the purpose of the audit, our responsibility, and also the results of the 2019 audit. So the purpose of the audit is to provide assurance that management has presented a true and fair view of the financial statements and operations of the city, enhance the degree of confidence in the financial statements, and hopefully identify any insights in the areas where management may improve their controls or processes. So our responsibility as auditors is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about where the financial statements are free of material misstatement. We are to express an opinion on those financial statements and also to comply with all of our professional standards. So a few quick audit results, and we'll disclose these more and talk about them more in just a few moments. It is a clean audit opinion. The technical term is an unmodified opinion, but it is a clean opinion on the financial statement. And there were four internal control findings reported in the 2019 audit, and we'll talk about those in detail in just a moment. So government-wide financial statements, this treats all funds of the city, as I like to call it, like a business. It takes the general fund and adds the capital assets and long-term debt. It takes all the governmental funds and does that, and also combines up the business-type activities, which for the City of Jackson includes sports flex and other items there. The total assets and deferred outflows for the year were $226.85 million. You can see that's an increase of about $3.69 million. With the significant changes noted there, there's a $2.36 million increase in cash. A portion of that is related to a decrease in investments in the current year. We just had to move around some money for operations. A $1.01 million decrease in grants receivable, and a $3.47 million increase in construction progress. Most of that is related to road projects going on around the city, which we can see where we're at. So a few liabilities to point out. The city's total liabilities did decrease. You can see that $3.5 million decrease. $7.8 million of that decrease is related to the city's pension plan with TCRS or Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. I'll point some of that out in just a moment. And also an increase in deferred inflows related to pension, $3.33 million, which that's actually a good thing, even though they're categorized with liabilities. That's a revenue we're gonna recognize over the next four or five years. So total net position, the change for the current year, it's $66.86 million this year compared to $59.69. The two slides just before this bear more bearing than just the numbers changing. So for the general fund, which is the major operational fund of the city, you can see fund, total assets there are $48.73 million. That increase this year is related to the same increase talked about on government-wide, the increase in cash with a decrease in investment, and also a $937,000 decrease in grant receivable. Now, grant receivables are largely due to timing. It's the timing of the road projects going on, and also when we've spent the money that we then can be reimbursed for. So that really doesn't have any bearing on the city as much as just the timing of when the projects were going on. And I didn't say this at the start, but this is not a prepared speech, so anybody that has a question anytime, feel free to interrupt me where I'm at, and I'll do my best to answer the question as I can. So total liabilities and deferred inflows for the general fund, $31 million compared to $30 last year, a $909,000 increase. Most of that's related to accounts payable, again, related to road projects going on around the city. So total general fund balance, not a real significant change, $17.72 this year compared to $7.25. And we compared three years, just so that you don't see just one year change. You kinda see a progression of where the city's at. I've also listed out there what the general fund revenues and expenditures were, and also what the change in fund balance was from one year to the next. It was a $471,000 increase this year. Last year's increase was $132,000. So a lot of the same. The reason for the most significant piece of that general fund revenue expenditures is, again, grant money and the timing of its receipt. So the other governmental funds, this includes police drug, debt service, capital outlay here, and a couple other smaller funds. We've listed out there the total assets and liabilities, not really a comparison because capital projects and debt service can change significantly in a year, and it's just timing of when we took out debt and when we had the project. So comparison of those funds doesn't always bear a good indication of anything that's going on outside of the projects or getting closer to completion. So $29.22 million, same discussion, transportation enhancement grants related to Effie Wright and the Highland Dedrick roundabout there. $38 million in current year expenses, and we've noted those there. And a $98,000 our current year decrease in fund balance. Last year was a $3.78. Again, debt service and capital outlay being included in this category, just timing of the projects and when we took out debt can lead to some significant variances there. So proprietary funds of the city, we'll just point out a few high-level things on those. $16.5 million in assets, most of which is capital assets there. $4.6 million in liabilities. Three and a half of that is long-term. $12 million in total net position compared to $12.4 last year. So again, not significant variances noted here. These are the ones that try and treat like a business and try and feed, fund the operations of themselves for the most part. So the largest note, if you took your financial statements as a whole numbers-wise, would be the change in the pension plan. So for TCRS, this is not a privately invested plan by you. It is money that we contribute to the state of Tennessee, to TCRS. They invest that money on an annual basis, but the investment income has a direct impact on the City of Jackson. And the state's retirement plan had a good year investment-wise, to which you gained about $14 million in investment income directly related to your portion of the TCRS plan. You can see those numbers kinda spelled out a little bit better there. You get to recognize a significant portion of it this year. That's why the net pension liability decreased $7 million. But that $3.5 million number I quoted earlier, that's a deferred inflow, you'll get to recognize it piece by piece over the next four or five years. It's a smoothing mechanism so that your pension plan doesn't go $20 million one way this year and $20 million another way the next year. They smooth out those numbers, and you can see some of that information there. So before I get to questions, I know that's where it was. I want to conclude a few different things there. Slides we've presented to you in the past, and we want to keep presenting to you for information purposes. It is an unmodified opinion, clean opinion on the financial statement. We do note that fund balance has decreased in the general fund. You can see where it was in 2013, and some of the challenges that existed between then and now. And you can see where it is in 2019. We note $16.7 million is considered unassigned, meaning available for any use. It is not currently restricted, committed by this council, assigned by management or any other category, is sitting currently unassigned. The percentage of unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budgeted general fund expenditures is 22.5%, and you can see it in the past few years. We want that number to get to 25%, and it will be in short term based on budgeted projections in the coming year and some of the challenges that have been accomplished over the last couple of years as well. So the four internal control findings, I'm gonna read those out a little clearer. I want to give you their titles first. Two of them are repeat findings, things we've talked about in the past, and they are not identical, but they fit the same category and the same criteria by the state comptroller's office. One is we exceeded budgeted expenditures there. Another would be failure to receive authorization for debt, which that's related to interfund loans between funds. It's not long-term debt as we usually term it. The new findings would be there were a couple of accounts that required major adjustments or material adjustments. So we noted reconciliations were not performed, so that those adjustments were not required. And the state of Tennessee requires all funds given to the city as payment for anything to be deposited in a city bank account within three business days. We noted some times that was missing, so we wrote a finding for it as well. So if you look at the financial statements on page 130 of the big blue book I gave you, we spelled out the findings, and I think it's important for us to describe some of those things so that, as the Budget Committee was just talking about a few moments ago, so people that can address things in the future can know where the problems were in the current year. So the first finding related to exceeding budgeted expenditures. First, in the general fund, we noted a few major functions. They exceed appropriations. We noted them as public safety, public works, public welfare and community service. All had varying amounts of appropriations that were exceeded. And we also noted in the solid waste collection fund, due primarily to commercial garbage charges, total expenditures in police drug fund due to some capital outlay, and total expenditures in the community redevelopment fund, which is related to a debt payment that gets adjusted over there late in the process. And we also noted in the finding there were some unapproved transfers, unapproved budget amendments that were not included in your financial statement because they did not go through city council. So we wrote that as part of the finding. That's not technically a TCA code, but we wanted to note that there was some operational budget, there was an operational budget used throughout the year that we did not include in the city's financial statement. So to the second finding, failure to receive authorization for issuance of debt, there was an outstanding interfund liability from the solid waste collection fund to the general fund of $802,000. That's a problem that's been addressed in previous years and been corrected up to a portion, but the operations of that fund are currently not supporting itself. So that liability just increases as we need cash flows. The general fund supports it. So we wrote that finding for a couple of years now. And also the sports flex fund owes both to the general and debt service fund approximately about $300,000. And we know those challenges and are working, the city is working toward complying with that liability. So a few reconciliations not performed. The major note is through audit adjustments, the change in net position in the general fund decreased $1.2 million. It's varying, it's adjustments to inventory, adjustments to accounts payable, the majority of which was related to grant projects that, those invoices don't come in after the fact, but the work was done previously, so we end up accruing those into the year. So it significantly impacts the financial statement. And the final one was the three-day deposit rule. There were just multiple items noted where city funds were not deposited in the city's financial statements within three business days.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. We note that the three-day deposit rule has been on our audit for the past four or five years. What could be done to correct that, Mr. Chairman, and to our Budget Committee?
I think for us, the issue has been, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's been the money collected outside of City Hall. And so I think it's been an issue of possibly getting it here in time, and we're gonna make sure that our employees know it's a priority, that they have to get that here within three days. That's correct.
And if I may, for the record, relative to your findings, in our packet, the city responded to those findings, correct?
Sure.
And Mr. Mayor, if you could, I guess, brief us on, you know, where we're going in the future relative to the findings?
Yeah, so we'll address several of those coming up with the Audit Committee, with the interfund loans. And so that's gonna make sure, and we've already addressed some of those, with the internal transfers, $10,000 or above had to be approved by council, our Audit Committee, the establishment of the Budget Committee. And then we're working right now with our special enterprise funds to shore up those accounts to make sure that we're coming, we're netting out as closely as possible.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, to confirm from our meeting Thursday, we get a letter every year from the comptroller's office after the audit. And so we received the one from 18 that we'll get to later that requires us to set the Audit Committee in place. And I guess, can you help me see the big picture of if with the audit happening, we get the recurring findings, that we've seen some going back to 2013, and then management puts in place an action plan, and how we reconcile all that? Like, what responsibilities does the auditor have, does the city have, to correct those findings?
Sure. So we can't take part in management, that's one piece. For us to stay independent and for us to be an independent auditor, we can't take part in management. So there can't be a, you know, a constant phone call saying, hey, are you over budget or not throughout the year, because then we're taking part in management. But, you know, we talked about previously with the accounting department, with the recorder, you know, because we've had a repeat finding since 2013, they're not always the same. Every year's not the same. So when, it's like everything else, when we put out one fire, another one pops up. So it isn't, it isn't like the same department, the same things happening year after year, that we're constantly over budget in the same line item or anything else. Grants often do it. I think if you look back for the last five or six years, when a department pops up that's never been there before, it's usually that we got a public works grant that, you know, we didn't accrue everything for. Our responsibility to report on a GAAP basis brings expenses into the financial statements that on a cash basis, meaning we didn't write that check before June 30, wouldn't be accrued for and might not have been paid attention to for budget purposes, and we're not gonna go back and amend the budget three months after the fact. So there's some of that, and our responsibility obviously is to report and hope- And our responsibility obviously is to report and hopefully, as stated at the very beginning, give management some processes, some controls. As has been talked about and as has been evident over the past few months with the budget committee and their work, there's attention being paid there to hopefully correct all those issues going forward. You know, there are challenges in any government related to overtime and public safety, related to grant projects, related to capital needs late in the fiscal year that are always going to cause budgeting hardships, I guess is how I'd say it. But I think those challenges are being met. And as we said, you know, there are some very material numbers that were over budget, but some of those items noted are because we're switching from an idea of a cash basis to us reporting on gap and getting all those accruals into the financial statements that Matt and I have been thought about throughout the current year.
And I guess you guys would say you've seen enough progress. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but
Sure.
I'm trying to reconcile how we continue to get the, I guess, unmodified opinion, a clean opinion with the same, what looks like the same findings.
So sure.
Or to what extent would that warrant a different opinion?
That's right. So one big point is the material misstatement. So if we, if we get to a point in the financial statements where we feel like, hey, I can't adjust to a number because I don't know what the number should be and I can't get the financial statements to a materially correct position, that's when we begin modifying the opinion. Obviously, if there's fraud involved, if there's other, if there's internal control deficiencies to which we believe, hey, nobody knows what's going on, that's when we modify an opinion. These all, I won't call any finding typical because every city is different, but these are, the interfund being, I think, city of Jackson's specific challenge, you know, sometimes that, the rest of them are typical findings. You know, the material nature of the over-budget, you know, goes back and forth. If you look back a few years ago, might not have been as material as they were this year due to those unapproved council amendments being pulled out that increased some of those numbers. Whereas we still would have had the finding, but it did raise some of those numbers because we were using an operational budget that was different than what went through city council. So we have disclaimed opinions. We have done others at other municipalities, but often it's management's highly intent on committing fraud somewhere. And, but for the most part, an unmodified opinion takes something to get away from.
Thanks, I appreciate it. That's helpful, at least for me, trying to figure out, you know, where we're going.
And Councilman Pretty said a moment ago, the state reviews your financial statements six months after the fact. So even the changes we're making, that council is making today, you know, they may comment on it six months from now and it's irrelevant of the changes that's been made so far. So they have, we have to react to the comptroller's office, us as auditors, you as council. But sometimes it takes just a phone call to say, hey, we've made those changes. It's just six months down the road from now.
So the two point one two million total internal budget transfers amendments that were not brought through council, do those affect the bottom, do those affect our net position?
No.
No.
No, these were amendments to the city's budget inside of an internal software that is usually used because, you know, the budget we submit to the state isn't as detailed as line item, right? So it is a step below major function and we present some other items. So then the operational budget goes down and breaks it down by line item. And so we've used that especially as the original. But when you present budget amendments, as Mr. Arnold was just up here, you present them as line item. So we're able to go through city council minutes and go from your beginning, which matches what you sent to the state, and move over to an amended budget. Most years that matches in total and by major function. And just this year, we weren't able to identify everything through city council minutes. So anything we could not find in city council minutes, we removed. As I said, it did not create a new finding. It changed the numbers in the finding, but no, it affected no actual numbers, only budgeted appropriation.
Okay, so it's my understanding that that had happened for multiple years, not just this year?
So by total, I can't, I can't say that there was an additional. Amendments inside of a major function, amendments between line items. I think as Councilman Brooks was asking a moment ago, you know, why are we presenting this amendment? Inside of a major function, even if those amendments were made by financial statement purposes, they wouldn't show. They're in operations for that specific major function, that major department. This, this identified issue is one that is unusual to us. Meaning in previous years, the city council minutes from original to amended budget would tie in total and would tie by major function. Line item, we didn't check by line item because presentation of financial statements at the major function level or at a department level. This year, as has been shown before, you know, the original to amended did not tie to the operational budget. That was the sign that, hey, we've got some kind of issue. And so we went looking for those. And if I identified them by line item, as we've discussed in the budget committee, we've identified by line item what amendments didn't go through and removed those specifically.
Can you provide that list to the council?
I sure can.
Okay. In the pre-agenda, or in the agenda review meeting, I brought up the point about the West Tennessee Health Care's donation.
Sure.
Can you, were you able to find any information about the use of that being restricted?
I think management was looking for it. I have
Okay.
Oh, that's a nineteen ninety resolution. And you can evolve.
There was, the letter that we received from the comptroller, is my understanding from our agenda review meeting that we're getting these letters every, every year, basically. It's my understanding that we've, this is the first time the council has seen this letter. It's addressed to the mayor and the council. I think it would be wise of us to resolve that any future correspondence that's delivered to the city that is addressed to the council should be delivered to the council within a reasonable amount of time. That way, it's our responsibility to have fiduciary oversight.
Sure.
And it's hard to do that when you're not brought up to speed.
So the city gets one every, for every, for every audit that goes to the comptroller's office. The independent auditor gets one that I would describe as a cleanup letter, meaning, hey, you missed this line item. You should have wrote this word inside of your independent auditor's letter that you wouldn't see because it just, it doesn't matter. And then whoever the oversight body is receives the letter, usually noting if there was a loss, if there was negative fund balance, if there were findings related, to have that responsibility. So yes.
And that's usually six months or so after.
For municipalities, yes. They'll, they review smaller audits that are issued throughout the year more timely. And then, of course, with the cachet of amount of audits they receive at twelve thirty-one, yeah, they take some time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have just one general question. For the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, what do you think about the financial status of the city of Jackson?
Well, I think knowing what I know and knowing where you were, knowing that we've refunded the debt, which took out, which created a more manageable debt service for the next few years. And also knowing the attention paid, I believe the season good shape.
Thank you.
I had a question relative to the net pension liability. Could you kind of go back through that? I'm sorry. Could you kind of go back through that for us?
Sure. Let me find you the actual page so that you can hopefully see it. Okay, so if you, if you look at your blue book, it's page seventy-nine. That actually shows the ins and outs, the ups and the downs of the pension plan. And again, this is not an investment plan managed by the city of Jackson. What your requirement on annual basis is, is the state will set a contribution rate that per employee that is included in that plan has to pay. So you can see total pension liability, the top line increase from one hundred and ninety-three million to one hundred and ninety-six million. That is taken into account life expectancy, total number of employees added to the plan and a host of other things. But where the major change was with the city this year was in the investment side. You can see that there, fourteen million dollars in net investment income. We paid, we benefit payments paid were nine point three million. We also had contributions from the city of Jackson of six point eight million. All that nets down to result in a fourteen point eight eight million dollar liability compared to twenty-two point six eight in the previous fiscal year. And you can see some of those, those numbers really don't mean anything if you don't see them all the time, I guess. But planned fiduciary net position as a percentage of pension liability was ninety-two and a half percent. You can see that number going back a few years. This was a big jump. It's eighty-eight. Where we want to get that is a hundred, that's fully funded. But as I said, for the TCRS plan, they dictate what you contribute on an annual basis. And as long as their investments do well, the net pension liability decreases. When their investments have a bad year, the net pension liability increases, so.
And I guess just for our employees who are in the plan, that's positive.
That is positive.
Okay.
Yes.
And despite all those numbers, and it's kind of, can be a bit confusing, but for them, it's positive.
It's a positive, very positive.
And I guess a safe investment.
Yes.
When they retire, they're getting paid still.
Right.
That's right.
That's my concern. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Matt, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, item two under new business is a consideration of a resolution to establish an audit committee. Bobby, come back up and address that.
Mayor Congress, if I could, before we proceed to the resolutions, I'd like to speak to a couple of items that were in a discussion about the audit. Let me assure the council that what I'm used to are accounts being reconciled. So we're working diligently this year to ensure that all of our general ledger accounts are accounted for properly and reconciled. As it speaks to the budget, expenditures exceeding budget appropriation, with the guidance of the budget committee and support of council, as you know, we've addressed that in good fashion this year so far, in my opinion. And we're being very diligent to ensure that when we get to June thirtieth of this year, that we're not facing that type of situation again where actual expenditures have exceeded appropriation.
Quickly, if I can, I would think that one way to manage that is to, is to adhere to the budget and not have as many amendments
That's correct.
Coming.
No, you're right, Councilman Brooks. With, with that said, I would like to take this opportunity just to give the council sort of a heads up. Because related, related to that work, as you know, the operating budget that the council is working with this year was a budget that was adopted in not the normal fashion as it has been historically. And in fact, we have, the budget was essentially, it was an exception-based budget for this year. Essentially, it was last year's budget with just a very limited number of exceptions or changes made. So that creates a situation where it's possible that certain departments who have been operating above their budget in the past and those operations, their actual operations have not been adjusted this year. It creates a situation where this year they may actually be operating above budget this year as well, just by nature of the fact, the way the budget was done historically and that budget was rolled forward, if that, if that makes sense. And then there are some other departments this year that current operations are not necessarily aligned with the budget. Now, with that said, we've been working, again diligently, to kind of identify these and to understand the necessary budget amendments to address that problem such that at June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, we're not faced with a situation where expenditures exceed appropriations. I say all that just to say that in the coming months, you may see some necessary required budget amendments for this year so that we're not in this situation at June thirtieth. Does that, that make sense?
And Mr. Chairman and to the council and to Bobby, with respect to capital to outlay, it's going to be Neil and I with borrowing money for the next few years is going to be thin.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we, we need to understand and prioritize our capital needs in the immediate future. And we need to work hard through our operations to hopefully generate available revenues that can go toward capital, kind of minimize the need to borrow.
And the council will also be notified of some dates before our normal budget hearings. We'll kind of have some, some work sessions to go through. So you're better prepared and better knowledgeable of our capital needs, our capital budget, our borrowing needs and our operating budget as well. So you'll be notified of that as we, as we get to that point for the next coming fiscal year.
Go ahead. You want me to speak to the audit committee or you?
Either way.
Bobby can do that.
Go ahead.
One of you first. You want me to proceed? Okay. In the discussion that Mr. Woods led regarding the audit, you know, we discussed several findings and some of the progress that we've made to address the findings. And the next two resolutions would, would be such work, right? So the creation of an audit committee, that's what this proposed resolution does. Tennessee Code annotated nine three four oh five encourages and provides for municipalities or cities to have an audit committee. The comptroller's office, the Government Finance Officers Association. An audit committee is viewed to be best practices. And the city needs an audit committee and this resolution would, would create such committee. If you'll flip to maybe section five of the resolution. It outlines the duties and responsibilities of the audit committee. And it's to carefully review the city's annual audit and all audit findings. Meet with management to discuss such audit findings. Committee should satisfy that appropriate and timely corrective action has been taken by management to remedy any identified weaknesses. The audit committee should consider the effectiveness of internal control systems within the city. Should establish, should establish a process by which employees, taxpayers or other citizens may confidentially report suspected illegal, improper, wasteful or fraudulent activity. And there should be an annual written report from the audit committee back to the city council. What's proposed in this resolution, and this is consistent with the language in the Tennessee Code that authorizes an audit committee, and this has been reviewed by the comptroller's office, is proposed that our existing budget committee would be designated as the audit committee at this point in time on an interim basis, and that can kind of get the process started.
Mr. Chairman and to Mr. Arnold, section four, would you review that for me?
Yeah, what, what section?
And kind of explain it in detail because it's got a couple of O's on there.
A couple of what?
Ours.
Oh, Ours, okay. So what, what section four says, for those who may not be able to read it, the committee shall have access to the services of a financial expert either through a committee member or an outside party engaged by the committee for this purpose. Such financial expert should, through both education experience and in a manner specifically relevant to city government sector processes, possess an understanding of generally accepted accounting principles and statements, experience in preparing or auditing financial statements, experience in applying such principles in connection with the accounting for estimates, accruals and reserves and experience with internal accounting. with the accounting for estimates, accruals, reserves, and experience with internal accounting controls, and an understanding of audit committee functions. So-
Okay. What are we looking for here, Mr. Arnold, Mr. Taylor? Is this a high position or?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's up for discussion on if we can- I believe this would be a consultant in the interim and then could evolve into another position in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
You stated that the budget committee would be the audit committee for the-
At this point, to get the audit committee off the ground, so to speak, and started, the budget committee by this resolution would be designated as the audit committee and would serve in that function.
So this resolution right now is to come into compliance with the comptroller's office?
Correct.
And then as we get to firming up the actual audit committee in addition to the budget committee, that'll come back before council. Any changes to this or any additions to this where reference to an audit committee will come back before council for approval.
Okay.
I guess my question is, when you speak of the audit committee preparing an audit, this is the audit that was prepared by, you know, our outside council?
Yeah.
Surely, are we saying that the audit committee is going to prepare something like this? And if they are, then, one, it would have to be a funded committee.
Right.
As well as this financial expert who we are engaging. I can't see too many financial experts being engaged for free.
Yeah.
Whether or not that person is on the committee, or, which I would suggest, that we not engage someone who's on the committee, that we would have to hire an outside person to do that.
You know, understood, yeah. I agree with you, Councilman Brooks, saying this. Mr. Woods alluded, we're required to have an independent audit by an independent firm.
I understand that.
So definitely not replace that. And of course, again, you know, any investment of resources by this committee would require a budget and approval to do so.
Right. So, I mean, would that be a line item out of, I guess, your department, out of the finance department, or line item out of the mayor's budget? And these are all the things that we must consider. But on today, the kind of vague language, you know, that we're using in section four kind of doesn't address that. And I see that's coming down the road.
Yeah, this language was provided to us by the comptroller. We had to get this worked out with the comptroller before we could present it to you all. So this is what they want us to present to you all with our 60-day timeline to get something on our books to have an audit committee.
And after that, when will we address those issues that I'm-
We will address those issues before the next fiscal year so we can prepare that in our budget and have you all prepare that.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Arnold, to confirm that what we have before us, this resolution, as we discussed in the agenda review meeting, does meet the standards that the comptroller's office is prescribing to us.
Yes.
And there was the back and forth that we sent to them and they brought back.
Yeah.
And then could you highlight any updates in the most recent document that was given to us this morning from Thursday? Did we make some changes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I suppose the most significant change was confirmation that the budget committee could in fact serve as the audit committee.
Okay.
That would be the most significant change.
To speak to that, from the budget committee reviewed this and made the recommendation that the language in section two be changed. I think that's what's been changed since it was originally drafted. That would be line three and four, three, four, and five. And I have some addition- I think that needs to be clear as well. I think the way it reads now, the commas are inclusive rather than exclusive. So I would motion to change those- that language to the following. "To ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness, no audit committee member will be an elected official, employee, spouse of an official slash employee, or a person that co-mingles assets with an official slash employee of Jackson, with the exception of an elected city council member."
Mm-hmm.
I think that clears it up.
Okay, fine.
Is this an amendment?
Yeah, this would be an amendment to what's being presented to us at the present.
Could you repeat the amendment?
Yeah. Yes, so it would be a modification of section two, starting-
But before we get to that amendment, we need to have a motion and a second on the table so we can amend the resolution.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Okay, now we can get to that.
So the motion is to amend section two, starting at line two. "To ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness, no audit committee member will be an elected official, employee, spouse of an official slash employee, or person that co-mingles asset with an official slash employee of Jackson, with the exception of an elected city council member."
In plain language, what does that mean?
It means a city council member can be on the audit committee, but persons related to the council member, employee, anyone else-
Couldn't be on the committee.
Right. So it'd be made up just like our budget committee, city council members and people from the community.
Right. And then surely that- surely it would preclude any of those people being hired by that audit committee, too?
Right.
I got you, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did you get all that? First motion was Councilman Taylor made the motion. Councilmember Wallace made the second. Did you get the amendment all jotted down?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion on the amendment?
Motion to amend section two.
So, no, we made the motion on the original resolution, now we're making the motion on the amendment. Oh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Got the motion and the second on the amendment? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, now we go back to the original motion as amended.
So moved.
Any further discussion? We have the motion on the table.
Motion on the table.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right. Item three under new business is a consideration of a resolution authorizing interfund loans.
Okay, again, this is related to one of the findings in the audit that Mr. Woods discussed and shared with you all. It's also noted in the letter from the comptroller's office that's been addressed a couple of times this morning already. I'd like to kind of give you my understanding and definition of this. So Tennessee Code Annotated and the comptroller's office both prohibit funds from the city operating in a negative cash flow, if you can think about it that way. A couple of funds were mentioned in the audit earlier, the solid waste or the health and sanitation fund and the sportsplex fund. So in response to that finding, in response to the letter from the comptroller's office, this resolution is proposed. And it was prepared, again, from working very closely with the comptroller's office. And in essence, what this resolution would authorize would be either an interfund loan or an interfund transfer between funds such that at June 30th of 2020, again, we're not faced with a situation where one of our funds has a negative cash flow and is, in essence, being funded from the general fund. Now, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions, and then I have a comment to share before we-
Move the approval. Have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Arnold, I don't want to get ahead, you may be mentioning this, but just on the whole, we're saying this fiscal year allows us to clean up kind of what we need to, and then-
Right. I want to speak to this. So the interfund loan or transfer that this resolution would authorize would be one remedy to the situation that's been described. You know, there are others. And as we speak, we're pursuing another remedy, which would be making changes in how these funds actually operate, such that they're not operating at a negative cash flow, therefore would eliminate the need for this interfund loan or transfer. So we're pursuing that remedy now. And hopefully, we'll be in a situation by June 30th to where there would be no need for any type of approval of an interfund loan or transfer. This resolution would just authorize that requests be made to the council. And this resolution will suffice in terms of our response to the comptroller's office and the audit finding. But we hope to be in a situation where we're not required to do this, where we've made changes that eliminate the need for any type of interfund loan or transfer.
All right, we have a motion on the table from Councilman Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second by Councilman Pickens. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, item four is consideration of budget amendments.
So I have two additional budget amendments. These will- can be approved today. They do not require a second reading. And the reason for that is we're not increasing the budget, we're just moving funds around in the budget. So back in November, when the council approved the new capital budget for this year, included in that was $20,678 for the sportsplex fund. Those funds were originally placed in the capital outlay fund. This budget would move them to the sportsplex fund, which is an enterprise fund, and it's appropriately where those funds should be reflected.
Is there a motion for that budget amendment?
So moved.
Second. And a motion by Councilman Pickens, second by Councilman Taylor. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And the final budget amendment, we have a- we've had a city employee transfer from one department to a new department, and this is a permanent transfer of that position. It happened kind of mid-year, so the remaining budget that was budgeted in that employee department to begin with, that's being transferred to the department where they're going to finish out the year at.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Priti, second by Councilmember Wallace. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Item five under new business is a consideration of street acceptance requests for Johnson Creek, section one, Johnson Creek Boulevard, as depicted on the map.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Buteyn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wallace. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The vote is unanimous, all right. Item six is board appointments. Appointment of budget committee, appointment of Councilman Priti. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Pickens, second by Councilmember Brooks. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh-huh.
We already had a committee set up, though.
Committee set up, yeah. This is- this was your amendment to the resolution to have a council member on there?
I remember, I was just checking you out.
Okay, all right. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, next is the mayor's advisory council on domestic and sexual violence. Reappointment of Kim Tepford, reappointment of Gail Gustafson, reappointment of Stacy Miller, Cheryl Scott, and the appointment of Gerald Tackle- Tacker Gilbert, all for three-year terms.
Motion approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Our industrial development board have a reappointment of John Nanny for a six-year term, and the appointment of Dr. Andre Temple to fill the unexpired term of Mary J. McWherter.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next, Jackson Housing Authority, appointment of Don Morris to fill the unexpired term of Jimmy Cole.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Okay, y'all need to slow down. The vote is unanimous.
All right, item seven, it's consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could we just take a minute from the finance committee to explain that the invoice is over $10,000 to the newer members, they've already been paid? We just, by law, we have to approve them. Is that correct?
Yes, they're being paid and budgeted, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, anything else to come forward, counsel? If not, Mayor Curry, ladies' council meeting adjourned.
All right.